Good evening. I would like to call the December 11th, 2017 Belbrook City Council Meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. McGill?
Here.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager, absent is absent. Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here. May I have a motion to excuse Mrs. Donna Seager-Lawson?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Middlestetter to excuse Mrs. Seager-Lawson, seconded by Mr. McGill. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Formal approval of the City Council work session and regular meeting minutes of our November 27, 2017 meetings. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular City Council meeting minutes of our last meeting?
None, merely.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements, or oaths, we'll start with that. We have four returning members of City Council who will be sworn in this evening, and we're going to have them all step down, and I will give them their oath of office to serve a four-year and a two-year term?
Three of them are a four-year.
Three of them are a four-year term, and Mr. McGill is a two-year term.
He's completing an unexpired term.
Completing an unexpired term that will have two years left. So, gentlemen? Is that the way they can probably hear me?
Yeah, that's fine.
Black mark?
Yeah.
Gentlemen, would you all please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I say your name.
I solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
Will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
And will obey.
Will obey.
The laws thereof.
The laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Uphold and enforce.
Uphold and enforce.
The provisions of the Charter.
The provisions of the Charter.
And the ordinances of Belbrook.
And the ordinances of Belbrook.
And will faithfully discharge.
Will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
The office upon.
The office upon.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome back. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations. Any one want to say anything?
Do you want to make sure I'm here for that?
Okay. Have a seat. I just would like to thank all four of our members of City Council for serving. I know we didn't have any opponents this year, which is good and bad, but I want to congratulate all them for putting in the effort to run again for office. Next, mayor's announcements. I'm going to move something that I know is going to come up later to now, and I'm going to have Mark talk a little bit about it now, and then we have two fine young gentlemen in the audience, Joey and Drew, and I think they may want to come up and talk a little bit about their position and ideas.
Yes, so the two gentlemen brought to council's attention a couple meetings ago about the possibility of lowering the minimum voting age for municipal elections to the age of sixteen rather than the eighteen that is currently in place for anyone to vote in the state of Ohio. So I did some research on that, and then ultimately I asked the municipal attorney to render an opinion on our ability to do that. And I've provided counsel, actually provided Mr. Derico and Mr. Ward copies of those two just so they could understand. Just to summarize, the municipal attorney basically said that yes, the city could lower the, or at least proposed to lower, the minimum voting age to any age, the age of sixteen, by doing a charter amendment. A charter amendment would have to be approved by a vote of the people. Generally, we do that every ten years. We have a Charter Review Commission that does that, but the city has the ability to propose a charter amendment at any time. There are some potential legal challenges that could be made if somebody wanted to challenge those, but based on the research that the municipal attorney did, she believes that by doing a charter amendment, the city has the ability to lower the minimum voting age, at least for municipal-specific issues. So that would be council and mayor elections, and any levies that are specific for the city of Belbrook only. It wouldn't be for school district, wouldn't be for county, anything like that, but it would only be for municipal-specific elections. So, given that, I, like I said, I did provide this to everyone to review, and I believe that they would like to speak on the issue.
Mr. Ward, Mr. Derico, would you like to come up and maybe just give a brief background or your position? At our last meeting, we had a pretty long conversation about it. We sort of, are you guys watching it on TV?
Yeah, that's what we were actually about to say, is that we observed all of your guys' discourse and wanted to take this time to engage in a discussion of any concerns or questions you may have. And we also compiled some research, too, that have been guiding us that we would like to distribute. Yeah, we would, like this time, if you guys have questions or concerns, hire away.
I think everyone has different opinions. I think what I would like to know are some of the public's opinion and my position. So a lot of these issues, we're elected by the public, so our opinions, while this would actually go to a vote if we decided to put it in front of the voters as they changed our city charter, it's also our job to listen to our residents because we're not going to send everything to vote to every single issue to vote, because that's why we're elected. We're elected by residents of Belbrook. I've been doing my, you know, talking to people to see what they've said. A lot of them are concerned. They think that, you know, eighteen is the legal age of emancipation, if that's the correct term, and that's when you normally would vote, that's when you can join the military, and that's when you can do those things. But I think, you know, we are, and we plan to talk about this further in the future, but at that point, I'm going to turn it over to some of them. I know you heard some of their concerns at the last meeting, but it's up to City Council to decide on how they're going to want to move forward with this.
I have a question, Mark. Has there ever been any instances where we have made changes to the city charter without a Charter Review Commission?
I believe there was, but it's been a long time because I would have to look back to see specifically, but when the, in the seventies, when the city implemented the income tax in the seventy-seven or so, the city in the state of Ohio can institute a one percent income tax without a vote of the people. The city did that. It was thereafter that repealed, and a number of council members were recalled at that point, six of the seven, and I think following that, there was a charter amendment to make it so that you had to have a vote of the people to even put the one percent in. I don't believe that that fell in a charter review cycle, but it may have. I can't, that would be the only case that I'm aware of that it may have happened. Generally, all the other charter changes have happened in that normal review cycle for the Charter Review Commission.
So procedurally, we would have a, to get the public's opinion, which you indicated would be helpful. We would introduce an ordinance or a resolution at one meeting, advertise it, and then we would have.
A public hearing.
A public hearing on it.
Yes.
Okay. So the timing of it is what we're really looking at because in order to have it on the May ballot, it would have to be.
We would have to be introducing it tonight, the reality, because if we introduced it tonight, the public hearing could be held on January eighth, and if it was approved on January eighth, it would take thirty days for it to become effective, and that would just barely meet the February seventh filing deadline for the May eighth election. The only other way would be to do it as an emergency, but I don't think that this really constitutes an emergency.
Well, I went on record at our last meeting to say I supported doing it and looking at it. You know, I do think we need to get feedback from our citizens to see where they stand on it. I mean, there's arguments either way as far as eighteen, or twenty-one, or sixteen, so it makes sense, but I still support it and would like to see it at least move through the process.
I've thought about it, talked with a lot of people about lowering the voting age. The one thing that the people I talked, most of the people I talked to weren't for it for reasons of, you know, it's standard to be eighteen to make decisions, and what we do here is very important, and the other thing is the city charter. And I'm always open to a lot of things. City charter is a guideline that was set up by a lot of people, and that's basically, I look at it like the will of the people. And I think for something like that to be changed, it should be a real, a lot slower process than what we're looking at now. I think maybe even the next Charter Review Board, or maybe possibly a few months from now, if people want to have more people discussing or come up and make viewpoints on it, but the people I've talked to weren't for it at all. And, like, my main concern, like I said, is the city charter, because, you know, when you start, you've got your laws and your charters and your ordinances and all those type of things set in place, it should be a slow process to make a, I think that's a major change. So, that's the way I look at it now. Looking for myself, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I would tell you this, that I think it's taken a lot of time and effort by these two individuals here to put together the information force as they have here, and they thought it through that this is something that, you know, they would like to see occur on that. But I'm of the opinion that in Ohio here, the age of emancipation is clearly eighteen years of age, and I think that the issue itself, while I would like to learn more about it as well, I think comes under, rightfully so, a Charter Review Commission, and we should be looking at, you know, having the Charter Review Commission look at that particular issue to see whether they wish to change the charter or not.
Ms. Mills, there.
I'm, I too don't want to rush into it. However, they've brought up some very valid points about getting into the habit of voting and being, participating in civic affairs. And we do let them drive at sixteen, although I understand there's some, a movement afoot to raise that age, but I'd like to study it some more, and I don't know, is it six more years? Because we just had a charter review.
I'm going to look it up here because I was just thinking the same thing, so I'll get back to you on when the next Charter Review is.
Okay, he said 2013, so.
Is that when it was?
That's where I was going to say that for you, because it was while I've been on council, so it had to have been in the last five years.
I was on the church commission at that point.
So, that's, that's six years, that's a long time to wait. I don't think it needs to extend to that level, and we could certainly do a lot of polling and talking to people in the, in the city to see if there's even a hope of a, a chance to have it passed. But I think any sixteen-year-old who's willing to participate in civic affairs, do the necessary research, and actually come out and vote deserves the chance to do so. The main concern is voting on monetary issues when they aren't responsible for paying the property taxes, which in Belbrook is our single source of revenue.
That happens now anyways.
With renters?
With renters and.
Renters directly, though. I mean, they've got to say.
Indirectly, they still pay it indirectly because it doesn't.
It's in their rent.
It affects their rent.
Yeah, right.
So that's my only, I think my only negative is on that, but I'm certainly willing and would like to continue looking into it, and I think it needs to be a slow, thoughtful process, not rushed to get it on the May ballot, because it would have to be a rush job to do that.
Well, it wouldn't be on the May ballot unless we did an emergency.
At this point, yeah.
That's what I said, I don't think we need to do it in that manner. But, no, I just, I'd like to, I'd like to pursue it if worthy of deeper consideration.
Mr. Schweller?
First off, gentlemen, thank you for your efforts. I mean, you deserve to be commended for pushing the issue. Unfortunately, it appears that by the time it's voted on, you guys may well be eighteen to be voting anyway, unfortunately, but I think, you know, I talked to a lot of people about it, I think it's a charter review item, to be honest with you, because that group basically is focused on the charter, on all aspects of the charter, and I hate to do a lot of one-off, let's just change this line, let's change this line, change this line, and this would be a simple change from sixteen to eighteen, and a number of different references in our charter, I don't think it'd be that big of a deal, but I hate to kind of one-off things like that and basically not bring that as part of the annual or the every ten-year review of the charter in its entirety. Secondly, the folks that I've talked to about it, it's kind of interesting because I didn't hear a lot of positive feedback. In fact, I heard some very strong negative feedback, and primarily the focal point is these younger people have no skin in the game, they're generally living with mom and dad still, they're going to probably vote more like mom and dad. I mean, fact or fiction, we never know how those things play out, but a lot of them said they're not property owners either through rent or through owning real estate, and rent does have some impact if the real estate taxes go up on the property I own, I got to charge more rent for my tenants. So these people have some skin in the game, although they're still, I'm told, a lot of eighteen, nineteen, twenty-year-olds still living under mom and dad's roof, but in any event, I still kind of think eighteen is the age, and I think that's kind of what the voice of the people is that I've talked to, and I think I'd put it for the Charter Review Committee and go from there. But thank you for your efforts, and thanks for bringing to our attention.
And I guess my point is, one, is you have done a lot of work, it's, you know, this, which I'll read and may have questions after, it's probably a lot better in my, some of my college papers.
It's very well.
You know, but of course, you know, when I look at you two, I could say, yeah, I could see you two voting, but look at some of your friends or people you know that are already in your same age group, would you want them to vote? Do you think that they're going to spend the time to learn about the issues on the ballot? Are they just going to go vote? Also, it's going to be complicated. If it would pass and the voters passed it, it's not going to be a streamlined process where the county and the, puts it on the ballot along with everything else, and you go into the computer, it's going to have to be a whole nother side issue, it's all going to have to be counted separately, and that whole different process, because there's only going to be very specific things you can vote on, and even with a school issue, for example, you won't be able to vote on, but the levy or certain other things you could, city council, mayor, and that kind of stuff. And I also agree that the reason we have a city charter review committee is that there are, what, ten people? Or twelve?
Fifteen.
Fifteen people on that committee to kick these kinds of things around. I have talked to, I don't know, a handful of people. I don't think there's one that would support it at this point. I would support putting it in front of the council to make a formal opinion on, do we want to introduce it or not? If we would agree to do that, then we would go to the public hearing aspect of it. So I would support putting it to council for a formal vote to see if we would introduce it, and then if we agree to introduce it, then we would get more input from the residents. So that's my opinion. With everything going on, and I also feel that I don't believe we should be rushing it through when a city charter takes, how long does it take for the last review committee?
Six months.
Six months.
Six months on that for a charter review committee, but they're not just looking at one issue, they're looking at how many terms should the mayor get, all those kinds of things, so. But I will read this, and I will continue to ask input, and of course, our residents can always shoot someone here at the city and email me, or one of the city council members of their opinion on it, too.
What would you advise our next steps to be in the process?
I think we will talk about it further after the Christmas break and our next meeting to decide if we will, as a group, decide to put it to a formal vote to be introduced as an ordinance. So we'd have to be introduced first, and then assuming that we would agree upon it, then that's when it would go to that public hearing. So I would imagine that realistically it would be the second meeting in January if we decide to move forward with the introduction.
Yes.
I mean, it's all going to be left up to council, not me.
If you want me to draft an ordinance to present for the actual vote on it, then yes, that would be the soonest that it, you could vote on January eighth whether you wanted to introduce it. If the majority of council voted not to, then it wouldn't have a public hearing.
Then it wouldn't have a public hearing.
And if you did, if the majority of council voted to introduce it, then the public hearing would be held at the next meeting, and then again, council would vote, and if, at that time, it takes a supermajority, so it would take five to approve it to get it as a charter amendment per the Ohio Constitution.
And I think in our straw poll, unless minds have greatly changed, it's going to be a stretch.
It's going to be a real stretch.
For a supermajority.
Well, I know Donna's not.
Well, we're not, well, we're not doing that tonight. We would have a formal vote.
Right, but I mean, the prevailing opinion seems to be not.
Yeah, but like I said, it's smart to keep an open eye, and I'll continue to talk to people over the holidays. So I guess the question Mark's looking at for me right now is, do you want me to put something together for the eighth meeting?
I do.
Okay. Forrest?
Yeah.
Okay.
Willing to consider.
Excuse me?
Willing to consider.
Yes, I think we should do.
All right, put it, and Mike?
Willing to consider, if that's fine.
Yeah.
And I think it was brought to our attention, I think we need, we have service to at least introduce an ordinance, whether it passes or not, it's a whole other issue.
Yep. I agree.
I think it's worthy of discussion, I think.
There you go, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So, January eighth, seven o'clock, right here.
Now, you won't be able to say anything at that because it's an introduction of ordinance, so it's the public hearing aspect, you can comment on to, comment on it after, if it passes that, but that's not a open discussion time when we introduce something.
Is it a supermajority, just a progressive?
Not to introduce it, no. To, to, at the public hearing, they actually put it on the ballot is a supermajority. It's just a majority to introduce it to hold the public hearing.
All right?
All right.
Well, thank you very much for your interest in, in our political world. Moving on, we do have four public hearings this evening, and we'll start with ordinance number 2017-12. Mr. McGill?
Thank you, Mayor. City of Belbrook ordinance number 2017-12, an ordinance amending chapter 1010 curb cuts of the Belbrook Municipal Code, whereas the city of Belbrook has enacted chapter 1010 of the Belbrook Municipal Code, which is entitled curb cuts, and whereas the proposed of chapter, the purpose of chapter 1010 is to protect the peace, health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Belbrook, and whereas the city desires to amend chapter 1010 of the Belbrook Municipal Code to clarify the process for obtaining a curb cut permit, now therefore the city of Belbrook hereby ordains section one, that the following amendments to chapter 1010 curb cuts of the Belbrook Municipal Code be approved with additions shown by italics and underline and deletions shown by strike-through and brackets in section. In section 1010.01 and definitions, there's new language that talks as used in the section. A, a driveway means any area on private property for the accommodation of automobiles, trucks, or other vehicles coming from or entering a public street. And B, the driveway approach curb cut means an area, construction, or facility between the travel portion of a public street or right-of-way and private property intended to provide access for vehicles from the travel portion of the public street or right-of-way to private property. In section 1010.02, it's, it says, permit is required, new language there. No person, corporation, firm, other than the authorized employee of city shall construct a driveway approach connecting to a public street or right-of-way or cut, break out, or remove any curb along any street or other public way without first obtaining a driveway approach curb cut permit. The city manager or his designee may require such construction plans or drawings with the permit application as he deems necessary to. And A, permit all reviewing authorities to make intelligent and conclusive review of the application. B, enable the contractor to construct the proposed facility in accordance with the terms of the permit. And C, enable the individual responsible for inspection to ensure that the facility is constructed in accordance with the terms of the permit. And D, serve as a record of construction authorized by the permit. Section 1010.03, it's now known as fees. Fees for a driveway approach curb cut permit are hereby established as follows. Residential property, ten dollars, commercial property, twenty-five dollars. In section 1010.04, restrictions on construction, appears new language, the city manager or his designee may impose conditions in the permit upon construction of the driveway approach slash curb cut, which conditions are designed to facilitate the safe movement of pedestrian traffic and safe and expeditious movement of motor vehicles on the public streets or ways affected by driveway approaches curb cut. The conditions imposed upon driveway approaches curb cuts by the city manager or his designee under this section may include, but are not limited to, the following. In A, limitations of the number, size, and location of the driveway approach curb cuts for any premise to which the permit applies. B, requiring the use of alternative means of access such as service or private drives rather than direct connection to the public street or way which such alternative means are accessible to the premises to which the permit applies, and or requiring the direct connection or driveway approach curb cuts to the public street or way be limited and used only until alternative means of access such as service or private drives are made accessible to permit premises. And C, limit the construction of driveway approaches curb cuts to only one public street or way which the premise, where the premise to which the permit applies butts more than one public street or way. And D, requiring the driveway approach curb cuts be marked and are constructed to allow only the entrance to or only exit from the permit premises. E, requiring the construction of safety islands to separate two driveway approaches and curb cuts. And F, requiring the construction of right-hand or left-hand deceleration, acceleration, or storage lanes and appropriate traffic control devices, including but not limited to signals as necessary. And G, requiring the construction of driveway turnaround facilities so that vehicular traffic can change direction on the permit premises and enter the roadway in a forward direction. In 1010.99, penalty, there's some new language there that talks, that says, whoever violates or fails to comply with any of the provisions of this chapter has committed a civil offense and is subject to civil penalties. A separate offense shall be deemed committed each day during, during or on which a violation or noncompliance occurs for the violator. In A, the first offense shall be twenty-five dollars per day per offense or two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per offense total. And B, a second offense shall be fifty dollars per day per offense or five-hundred dollars per offense total. And C, a third offense shall be seventy-five dollars per day per offense or seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars per offense total. Section two, the ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
Yes, as we discussed when we introduced this ordinance the last time, this is just during our normal review of the municipal code, we find things that don't always work as are intended. The previous process to obtain a curb cut permit was, went through the chief of police, which probably made sense when it was talking about traffic patterns and things of that nature. What we've done is we've amended that to have it go through the normal administrative process, a zoning process more, through the administrative offices, we can get the opinions of the police chief, fire chief, service director, whoever it may be, to make sure that a curb cut is necessary and meets our requirements, but this code sort of spells that out a little bit better, so anyone who requests a curb cut in the future will go through the administrative process to obtain that permit.
Any questions on council? I know we've discussed. I know we've discussed this a few times. Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve ordinance...
It's a public hearing.
I'm sorry, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2017-12?
So, move to approve ordinance 2017-12.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. McGill to adopt ordinance number 2017-12 and ordinance amending chapter 1010 curb cuts of the Belbrook Municipal Code, seconded by Mrs. Middlestutter. Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestutter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
Moving on, ordinance number 2017-13.
Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2017-13, an ordinance amending ordinances 2016-14 and 2017-6, to adjust the City of Belbrook appropriations for 2017 to reflect additional costs in some line items and reduce costs in other line items. Whereas the City of Belbrook adopted a 2017 budget based on the best information available at the time, and whereas additional costs have or will occur on some of the line items and reduced costs are projected in other line items, which requires the amendment of the various appropriation levels. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby ordains section 1, that the 2017 appropriation levels and several of the funds listed below be amended as follows. The body of the ordinance is a list of the funds, and they're divided between personal services and other expenses, and then the total supplemental appropriations. The grand total for personnel, personal services is $15,275 under the levels appropriated. And other expenses are $1,023,591 under the appropriated levels. For total supplemental appropriation of $1,038.66 under the appropriated, previously approved appropriate levels. Section 2, the ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
Yes, this is the amendment to the 2017 appropriations to achieve budgetary compliance. The reduction of $1,039,000 roughly. The majority of that is because we deferred the Upper Hillside Water Main project until 2018. Actually, the bid opening on that project is tomorrow, so we'll, council will hopefully award a contract in January for that project. But, that's the majority of it. The rest of it are just normal amendments that happen throughout the year as projects come and go or different things happen and we have to make appropriations, changes. This gets us in compliance with state law.
Any questions on council? This is a public hearing. Any questions from people in the audience this evening? Louie? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2017-13?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2017-13.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Go with Mr. Schweller, I think.
With Bruce, I think.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. Edwards to adopt ordinance number 2017-13 and ordinance amending ordinances 2016-14 and 2017-6 to adjust the City of Belbrook appropriations for 2017 to reflect additional cost in some line items and reduced cost in other line items, seconded by Mr. Schweller. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestutter?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
Moving on, ordinance number 2017-14. Mr. Schweller.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2017-14, an ordinance approving the appropriations of the City of Belbrook for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2018. Whereas the city council has reviewed the proposed 2018 annual budget, whereas the City of Belbrook desires to adopt the 2018 annual budget and authorize related appropriations, now therefore the City of Belbrook hereby ordains section 1, that to provide for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Belbrook during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2018, the following sums be, and they are hereby set aside, to be appropriated as follows. The funds are broken out by the individual funds and they're broken into personal services, other expenses, and transfers. The amounts for personal services, $3,822,700. The amount total for other expenses, $3,326,196. Transfers, $550,000. For grand total of 2018 appropriations, in the amount of $7,698,266. Section 2, that the finance directors hereby authorize to make payments from any of the foregoing appropriations upon receiving proper documentation approved by the officers authorized by law to approve the same. And finally, section 3, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. And this will lead us to the long-awaited budget presentation by the city manager.
You can hardly wait, I'm sure. So, yes, the budget appropriation ordinance before you. I've got a brief presentation on what is in that nearly $7.7 million. So, first, the thing that we start with when we're talking about the budget is our mission statement. And really, the key component as we're, as we prepare this budget is that we're providing effective, courteous, and fiscally responsible municipal services that promotes a high quality of community life for all citizens. There's a couple slides here later that I'll show where I think we demonstrate that on a, as we prepare this budget. This slide here presents a summary of all the funds combined, and it can be a little bit misleading because everything is sort of grouped together. I'll break it down. But, really, what this shows is we're going to start the year with $5.1 million. We're going to have income of $7.6 million. We're going to spend about $7.7 million, and we're going to end the year with just over $5 million. That in and of itself looks like a balanced budget, but as we get into this, you'll see where some of the nuances of that occur. So, first, this is for our property tax-supported funds. So, those funds are our general fund, our police fund, our fire fund, and our capital improvement funds. Those funds, their primary source of revenue is property taxes. And that's what the voters have a vote to approve or deny levies, but that money goes to support those services. In this fund, we're going to start the year with about 2 point, just over $2.6 million. We're going to take in $4,167,000, but we're going to spend $4,384. So, the net difference, we are going to spend $217,000 more than we're going to take in in these funds in 2018. So, our balance is going to decrease from $2.6 million to about $2.4 million. And we'll get into some of the specifics as we move on. Similarly, we have a group of funds that are, I call, transportation-related funds. This is our street fund, our state highway. Generally, it's, these are funded by motor vehicle taxes, license fees, things of that nature. We're going to start that, the year with about $295,000. We're actually going to take in about $47,000 more than we're going to spend next year. So, the fund balance there is actually going to increase. This, although it increases, this, on a year-to-year basis, can vary based on the demands of winter, how much salt we need, how much overtime we use, how much it costs for street improvements, things of that nature. But, for 2018, this is a positive fund balance. The next fund is the waste collection fund. So, we have a beginning balance of about $217,000. In 2018, we're actually going to spend about $55,000 more than we're going to take in, decreasing that balance to about $162,000. Council, we have discussed this. This primary increase is we have a new five-year contract with Rumpke for waste collection recycling services. There is a cost increase, but we are not going to increase the cost to residents at least for 2018. But, as you can see, at $55,000 a year, it won't take long before that fund balance will be low enough. There will be a future rate increase, but in the short term, we are going to use the reserves that we have in place for waste collection to not raise the rates for the residents. And then finally, we have the water fund. The water fund is going to begin the year with just about $2 million. We're going to have budgeted income of 2.6. We're only going to spend 2.5. And in that 2.5 is the almost $1.1 million capital improvement project. And in the income, there's $890,000 in grants and loans related to that project. So, even with that, we're going to have a positive $125,000 for the year, and we're going to end the year with about $2.1 million. What this really means, how it impacts the residents is we don't anticipate having to raise residential water rates again in 2018. We've not raised those rates since 2011. We've still been able to continue to increase this, the fund balance there without raising those rates. So, we see no need to do that in the future here, at least in the short-term future. So, when you look at our, just over $7 million in total revenue, this is from all sources, you can see that 45% of it is based on the property tax. Another 19% is intergovernmental. Now, that number is a little bit higher this year because there is that $890,000 in grants and loans from the state of Ohio for that water project. The other big component here is charges for services. So, this is what we receive in water fees, waste collection fees, and EMS transport fees are the big three items that are within that. And as you can see, the other items are fairly inconsequential there. So, when we talk about having a shortage in our property tax funds, you can see, here's sort of the reasons why. If you look back to 2008, 2011, we were receiving state revenue in the, in the amount of about, almost $360,000 a year. Starting in 2012, that number declined, and then really from 2014 on, that number's been right about $80,000 or $90,000. The only state revenue that we receive anymore is the local government fund. That's what that $88,000 is there. What we used to get is a state tax. Now, that could vary, but over the course of time, it averaged to be about $100,000 a year. And then the other thing, we had some reimbursements for personal property taxes and different things that the state had promised to reimburse us for when they made changes and they eliminated. So, the net effect of this is, for these years, we're receiving, based on the average over this time, about $270,000 less than we were before. And that's because the state has effectively balanced their budget by passing that burden on down to us. Back in 2009, 2010, the state had a significant shortfall. They balanced that by, instead of by, you know, raising taxes or changing their fees, they took the money away from us, forcing us to go and ask for that money here locally. So, we've been able to survive for a period of time, but as our request was in this year and will be again in the future, we needed that revenue. This is really what has caused our structural deficit to be in place, is the cuts to the state revenue, from the state revenue. So, when we talk about our property tax dollar, everyone knows that they pay a significant amount of property taxes. The majority, almost 55% of it, goes to the school district. That's where the significant portion of it is going. The city receives only 22% of that. And unlike most cities in the state of Ohio, we don't have an income tax. So, this is our source of revenue here. So, that 22% of that property tax is where we get our money. Beyond that, the county gets about 17, almost 18%, the JVS gets 3%, and the Park District gets 2%. So, relatively speaking, our share for the services we provide is relatively small. So, just to give you a sense of comparing where your property tax goes on a dollar basis, so if you own a $150,000 home in the City of Belbrook, you pay about $3,794. That number is going to change in 2018 because the county did a triennial revaluation countywide. So, this number will go up, but it, the valuations in the City of Belbrook went up by about 9%. The property tax bill is not going to go up by 9%, but it will go up by some. But, those rates have not yet been determined by the county auditor, but when they are, we'll update that and show people what that is. But, of this, only $841 goes to the City of Belbrook. So, when you look at, what are the, what are the direct costs to the City of Belbrook for a resident? And this is based, again, on a $150,000 home. And if you compare the 2012 costs, what one of those, what a Belbrook resident paid in 2012 to what they are going to pay in 2018, you'll actually see that they pay less. And I doubt that there's many city governments that can say that they pay less, the residents pay less six years after 2012 than what they did before. So, our residents are paying about $1,200 a year for water, based on average usage, and waste collection fees, and then our property taxes. So, they're actually paying $29,000 less than they were in 2012 for the same services. And if you look at this, $1,200, $100 a month for police, fire, street services, street improvements, water, and waste collection. I can pretty much guarantee that there's not a resident that pays less than $100 a month for their cable bill, their cellphone bill, their electric bill. Everyone's paying more for, more than what they are paying on a monthly basis for all those services that we provide. So, I think this is where, being fiscally responsible, this is, this is sort of what proves it in my mind, is what we've done to, to meet our mission statement. So, to go, to give you a sense of the breakdown of that budget, how are we spending that $7 million? You can see, 53% of it goes to our personnel, to our police officers, our firefighters, our service personnel that are out there doing, they're plowing the snow, they're responding to EMS calls, they're doing the police work to keep the community safe. That's where that goes. Another 19% goes to contract services. So, those are for utilities, our dispatch contract, our legal services, all those different things that fall under, that we contract with somebody else to do. And you can see, there's a very small portion that goes to supplies and materials for our salt and our fuel and things of that nature. And then our debt service and our water fund is only 2%. And then, this is a little skewed this year because our 22% capital outlay, we do have a very significant water project that's over $1 million. We don't have those on a regular basis, but that is a significant portion of the budget for 2018. If you, if you look at this, just the operating expenses, forget the capital for a second, you can see that it's really broken down into three components. Our police fund, our police operations is 33% of the budget, our fire operations is 22% of the budget, and our service department, which covers the streets and the, and the water department, are another 27%. Those combined take up probably 80% of the budget, with the rest of it being waste collection and then our general administrative services. So, you can see that our public safety is almost 55% of our budget. That's where we're spending our dollars on a daily basis. So, just to give you a sense of, for our property tax-supported funds, council probably gets sick of hearing this, we've talked about this many times, where is our fund balance going and what is going on? So, this really projects out where we are. So, in 2011 was sort of the high watermark for our fund balance. We topped out at over $3 million at the end of 2011. Since then, we've had a relatively steady decline, and now it's become a little bit steeper as we project out in the forecast here. So, at the end of 2022, this number is about $1.1 million compared to $3 million. So, this is the reason that we asked for a property tax levy in the fall, and that council will be looking to add some additional property tax again in the early 2018. On the contrary, our water fund has sort of had the inverse. We started out in 2008, 2009, we were in about the $750,000 range, and that has steadily grown, which is why we haven't had the need to increase water rates since 2011. Now, this doesn't mean that we don't need this money. This money is really there for the long-term viability of the water system. We have pipes in the ground that are 50, 60 years old that we know are going to need to be replaced, and the Upper Hillside project is a perfect example of water mains that we're going to replace before they end up being a big problem. So, we're trying to be proactive to do that. And that's what we're going to be using this, this money for in the future, is to do that same thing. We're able to build it, build it up now, but we know we're going to have some long-term needs as we go forward. So, speaking of our capital improvement program, for 2018, the total program is about $1.5 million. The majority of that is in the water fund, but of that $1.23 million that we're spending in the water fund, we're getting back $600,000 in grants that we don't have to repay, and then a $290,000 0% 30-year loan. So, we'll be able to pay $10,000 a year for the next 30 years to pay that loan back. So, really, of the, of the local city funds, it's only $682,000 is what we're spending in 2018. Of that, we have the annual street program, $150,000 budgeted for next year. We've identified the streets, we'll revisit those again in early 2018 to make sure that those are the ones that have the most need. We do have a stormwater drainage project actually up in the Upper Hillside plat, too, that we want to do while we're doing, actually prior to doing the water main project, to make sure that we have everything done there before we come in and do the water main improvement project. That project will be about $1.1 million total, but again, we have a grant and loan to cover a significant portion of that. The rest of the capital program is... The rest of the capital program is really for our vehicles and equipment. The police department, we're going to replace our last two Dodge Chargers, thank you, next year. Those are, I believe, 2013 models, so they'll be approaching five to six years old, so we'll replace those. That's $80,000 of that $94,000. In the service department, we have two pickup trucks that we're going to replace for a total of $70,000. The fire department has $47,000 total budgeted. Of that $40,000 is for our self-contained breathing apparatus that we're on a schedule to replace those. The models we have are being phased out, so we need to replace those. So, we're actually taking money that we had budgeted in 2017 and doubling up in 2018 to get two sets of those in 2018. So, with that, that is a brief overview of the ordinance sets before you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, I know we went through three work sessions, four work sessions?
Three.
Three work sessions going over all this, so I know we have went through this many times. Does any person on, member on council have any questions for our city manager?
Mayor, just to comment and thank city staff for getting this budget done on such a timely basis, because it's nice to have this thing laid out, have the roadmap ahead of us before we even start 2018. There's one thing, Mark, maybe you could provide a little bit more insight into, and that is, when you look at our overall fund balance at the end of 2018, we're projecting roughly $5 million. But it's kind of key, I think, and maybe you could explain it better than I could, the impact the water fund has on that, because water fund is roughly 40% of that balance, but it's got some very significant limitations, such that the general fund, I think, is like $2.3 million, the water fund's like $2.1. The $2.1 is very specifically here, Mark, and maybe you could shed some light on the limitations on how to use that.
Yes, the water fund, the fees that we receive for water are only able to be used for water-related issues, and that's in the day-to-day operation of that water fund, but also the future capital improvements. But that money sits there, but we can't use it to buy a fire engine, or hire a firefighter, or buy a police cruiser, because that money is, when we receive that money, when we're sending a bill to somebody, we're saying, this is how much it costs to generate that water now and in the future, and it can only be used for that specific purpose, and we have very stringent requirements on what it can be used. We do, we are able to charge some administrative fees to that, because obviously, it's a significant portion of our budget, and it takes some administrative fees, but beyond that, it can only be used for water-related purposes.
Thank you. I think that's just very important for everybody to understand that, because while it looks like we have $5 million in the checking account in 12/31/18, we've only got $2.4, $2.5 million that can be used for write checks for payroll and other capital items and things like that. That water fund is very restricted, so you almost want to take that out and say, if that is not growing, what's happened to the rest? And that's how you see the budget deficit that we've been facing, will continue to face until we get some new money in. Thanks.
Any other questions on council? This is a public hearing, any questions from the public? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2017-14?
Mayor, I'd like to move for the adoption of ordinance 2017-14.
May I have a second?
Second.
End roll call.
Motion by Mr. Schweller to adopt ordinance number 2017-14, and ordinance approving the appropriations of the city of Bel Brook for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2018, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, one more public hearing ordinance this evening, ordinance number 2017-15. Mr. Greenwood?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2017-15, and ordinance amending ordinances 2016-14 and 2017-6 to adjust the city of Bel Brook appropriations for 2017 to reflect additional costs in some line items and reduce costs in other line items for declaring and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Bel Brook adopted the 2017 annual budget based on the best information available at the time, and whereas additional costs have or will occur in some line items and reduced costs are projected in other line items, which requires the amendment of various appropriation levels. Whereas this ordinance is presented as an emergency to ensure the current budget authorizations are not exceeded. Now, therefore, the city of Bel Brook hereby ordains, section one, that the 2017 appropriation levels and several funds listed below be amended as follows. General fund, the administration, $1,000; personal services, $1,000; other expenses, zero; supplemental appropriations, $1,000; community environment, $1,661; and 2017 supplemental appropriations, $1,661. Total general fund, $2,0661; other expenses, zero; supplemental appropriations, $2,661. Water fund, $1,000; other expenses, zero; and supplemental appropriations, $1,000. Grand total all funds, $3,0661. And then, section two, that this ordinance is presented as an emergency measure in order to guarantee that all budget line items maintain a sufficient level of appropriations to comply with state law. Section three, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
Yes, we generally don't like to do emergency ordinances, and we haven't done them a lot, but in this case, when the previous ordinance, 2017-13, was our amendments to the 2017 appropriations, that was prepared in November. What we found was, there was additional appropriations that were needed to keep us in compliance with the budgetary laws of the state of Ohio. We identified those on Friday, so we were able to get on the agenda this emergency ordinance by passing this tonight. This will keep us in compliance. So, there was a payroll issue that we had discovered, that we need to take care of, and we needed the supplemental appropriations to do that.
Any questions on council? This is a public hearing. I don't see anyone coming forward. I will call this public hearing closed. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2017-15?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2017-15.
May I have a second?
Second.
End roll call.
Motion by Mr. McGill, I'm sorry, motion by Mr. Greenwood to adopt ordinance number 2017-15, and ordinance amending ordinances 2016-14 and 2017-6 to adjust the city of Bel Brook appropriations for 2017 to reflect additional costs in some line items and reduced costs in other line items in declaring an emergency. Seconded by Mr. McGill. Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, we've got one resolution this evening, resolution 2017-GG. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Thank you, Mayor. City of Bel Brook, resolution number 2017-GG, a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds for 2018. Whereas the city of Bel Brook has adopted its budget for 2018, and whereas the 2018 budget will require the transfer of money among various funds, and whereas the Ohio Revised Code, section 5705.14, requires transfers of funds to be approved by city council. Now, therefore, the city of Bel Brook hereby resolves, section one, that the transfer of funds be made by the city manager as follows. From general fund to capital improvement fund, $250,000; general fund to police fund, $100,000; general fund to fire fund, $200,000, for a total transfer of $550,000. Section two, that the fund transfers shown as specific line items are hereby approved from and after the effective date of this resolution, and may then be completed as determined by the city manager. Section three, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes, this is another requirement of the Ohio Revised Code, that we approve the transfers between the funds. This is transferring money out of the general fund to these various funds. We do this on an annual basis. This resolution gives the authority to do that on January 1st, or wherever is needed after that point.
Any questions on council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt resolution 2017-GG?
Yes, thanks, Phil.
May I have a second?
Second.
Darrell? End roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Middlestetter to adopt resolution 2017-GG, a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds for 2018, seconded by Mr. McGill. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, we have a city manager's report.
Yeah, yes. First item I have this evening, the planning board will have an opening on it. Our esteemed chairman and cameraman has served his two full terms on the planning board, so Louis will no longer, as of the end of this month, be on the planning board, so we do have a vacancy. We will be advertising for that here shortly. At the same time, the clerk of council has reached out. There are several other people who have expiring terms but are eligible to be reappointed. We're waiting for responses on those, assuming that everyone is interested, then we'll have those reappointments, probably at the January 8th meeting. But we will be advertising at least for the planning board opening, so if you know anyone who's interested in participating in one of our boards or commissions, please have them look for that. We'll get that posted here, probably before the end of the month and into January there. The only other thing I have, number one, our next meeting, we're not going to have one on Christmas.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, it's January 8th, Monday, January 8th, is our next regularly scheduled meeting, and I'd just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Schlagak. Anyone, any questions for our city manager? Seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports. Service. Oh, Donna, yeah, a safety.
Yes, Mayor, I just got a few things. The police department training, as Mr. Schlagak stated last meeting, that the state's not requiring mandated training this year, and as you stated, we were reimbursed $5,000 for the training that they did. So, this year, the chief is, goal for each officer is going to be about 20 hours of continuing training. That's, he feels that's very important, and that's good. Another thing, as far as training, the police personnel have completed training in the improved tactical vests. These tactical vests are an extra layer of protection that goes over the vests they normally wear, and they are, they're not worn all the time, they're used in certain scenarios. They are somewhat heavy, that's why they do the training, to make sure that in and out of cars in different positions and things like that, and so they complete that. Sergeant Sowers is going to attend the Great Lakes Leadership Academy, sponsored by the FBI, this fall. And some of the things citizens need to watch out for, scams, as we've probably all had them thrown at us, such as like the grandson scheme, bad guy calls the grandparents saying the grandson needs bail money, just don't do it, you know, there's a lot of these types of things out there. And I asked him one of the questions, I said, as far as phones used, it's mostly landlines in people's homes. There are a few on cellphones that are done, but most of them are, if you still have a phone at home, most of them are done across the home phone, and not so much the cellphone. Check your credit card for people trying to scam you, they've had some of that. Make sure, he said, one of the things, being Christmas time, people make large purchases, try not to leave them in your car or in view, make sure your garage door is put down, those type of things, because people always look and steal things like that. Talked with chief, the fire department training is also complete. Fire department training is, will always be ongoing. Chief said, one of the things that he's noticed is people, with the inclement weather, with frost and some snow now, to make sure that, suggest people clean their windshields more than just a little hole. So, he said that's kind of an issue, a safety issue. I guess we're all guilty a little bit of that. Cooking safety, he brought that up this time of year, people do a lot of cooking. Deep frying turkeys, that's another, can be a hazard. Just be careful, take a minute, just pay attention to what you're doing, make sure that you don't have issues with stoves boiling over, and turkeys boiling over, and all that type of thing. The wood burn, if you burn wood in your fireplace, or wood stoves, there again, most people do have the chimneys inspected, make sure that those things are in good working order. Also, he said if you have an unusual smell, or something doesn't sound right, your furnace or something, and you feel like you might be in danger, give the fire department a call, they'll check it out. Let's see. The, and that's all I got.
All right, thank you very much for this. Moving on, finance and audit.
Mayor, give me just appropriated $7.7 million, that's probably not more.
Is that enough for the evening?
It's almost enough, except we've got to adopt a credit card policy of a significantly smaller magnitude.
Yes, this is from our 2016 audit, they recommended having a specific credit card policy. This is in conjunction with obtaining new cards through our bank, that will allow us to meet some of these criteria here. So, we're in the process of doing both those, but this will get this adopted in 2017, and hopefully, we can take it off the list for the 2017 audit.
Hopefully. How many cards we have, Mark? Just, you're going to have one, or?
We'll have one, and with the purchasing card, we'll probably have one for each department, just so that it's specific to each department, but they will have specific limits, and they'll have to, they're responsible for turning in the receipts and tracking everything.
This is the same as we've had before, except we just haven't adopted as a formal policy.
Exactly.
Because we've had rules related to the card when they were issued back in 2014, when we first started doing it.
Yes, yeah, this is now official rules adopted by council, so that the auditors will be hopefully satisfied.
Wonderful. Anything else?
Do we need a motion for that?
We need a motion, yes.
We do. May I, let's see, may I have a motion to adopt credit card policy as presented?
So, move.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. Schweller to adopt a credit card policy, seconded by Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, any old business? Any new business? Open discussion? Nick?
Just to say, this is our last meeting of the year, I wish everyone a happy and safe holiday season.
I'd just like to thank the voters for allowing me to serve them. Looking forward to another four years, and like I say, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
I also would like to thank the voters for putting their votes in this last general election, as well as wishing everybody a very happy holiday season that's coming up. And one other note on the Christmas in the park, this last weekend, several of us attended that, very well attended, it was cold and that, but I think-
It wasn't that bad.
Good time held by-
They had the fires.
Just to end, wish everyone a very happy and safe holiday season, and get well rested for 2018.
I also want to say Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and don't forget about our men and women in uniform, both locally and also abroad, and we look forward to seeing you and serving you in 2018.
I would just like to echo those same, I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I'd also like to thank city council for serving this year, and Jamie, and Mr. Schlagak, and I also like to thank Louis for his service on the planning board. How many, how many total years? Put up fingers, Louis, 10 years.
I've been here nine, he's been here all nine of them.
Often I am, so thank you for your service. So, that's all I have. Does anyone else have anything to come before us this evening? I see someone stepping up.
Louis Schottberg, I live at 482 Ridge Top Drive, and it was a pleasure to serve on the planning board, as I did ten-plus years on it, because I think I took an unexpired term when I started. It was a pleasure, because all of these things that the planning board does, I've learned so many things being connected to it, to find out how things get done. It's just like how things get done up here, you know, you guys, we all elect out all the officials to run the city, but sometimes, I don't think the people realize what running the city really means, or what the positions really do. And since I've been involved in this, and it's an honor to be able to serve the city in that manner, and also do the camera, and I want to thank Mr. Schlagek for his guidance through our board, planning board meetings, in direction of whenever we needed to do something, and whatever was set before us. He always had a good explanation for us from the staff, and what needed to be done with the planning board, and so it was a pleasure to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Louis. Thanks.
Louis, thank you for your service, and you've chaired some challenging board meetings and made some very difficult decisions, but that's very appreciated, and we certainly respect what you did for us.
That one, great, great, I'll have to take that again, but that one, there was one ordinance that was really a tough one, and-
Should I start barking?
Well, I wasn't going to say that. That dog and cat ordinance, I mean, I learned a lot from that one, and like I said, I've said it before on it, I think there are some people that take better care of their dog and cat than some people take of their kids. Nobody can discount that, and at the same time, I think there needed to be a limit on it, because if you don't have, you're going to have people that are responsible that will take, and if I can only have one dog, I can only afford one dog, that's all I'm going to have, is one dog. There are going to be people that, I'm limited? I can't afford ten dogs, but I'm going to have them by golly. And then you think about it, and you go, well, that's a real problem now, because now the city has a problem, because the people next door are trying to sell their house, and they can't sell it because there's ten dogs that live next door, and then everybody feels like it's a zoo or something. So, I mean, I learned a lot through that process right there, and that's what I tell people, is that's where I have seen it work. The people came, we had the meeting, we discussed it at length, and we came up with a proposal that worked. And there it is again, you know, people, that's where I see a lot of things up here that work with the government, the city officials, but the problem that I hear, well, I don't have time to go talk to them. Well, if you don't have time to go talk to them, then I don't think you should have time to worry about it then, and go on with it and quit complaining about it. You know, because I've seen things that get done up here, and I've seen things get denied because of the way it works, but that's the way the process works, and it works if you use it correctly. All right, thanks, Mike.
Thank you very much, Louis. Does any member on council have anything else to come before us this evening? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.